Okay. Welcome. I'd like to call the August 6, 2020 West Sacramento Planning Commission meeting to order. We are meeting tonight via teleconference per sent to Governor's Executive Order N 2920, by which members of the Planning Commission and staff are participating via live video conference to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. Members of the public have been invited to watch the meeting via wave cable on our local channel, Channel 20, or streaming online through the city's website. Tonight's agenda and all agenda item materials are available on the city's website on the Planning Commissioner page. All public comments submitted by five o'clock via email to the Planning Commissioner clerk are available for consideration and are posted on the city website along with the agenda and going to the live streaming video of this meeting so that all planning commissioners and the community members can see the complete text and submittal information. The Planning Commissioner clerk will note the commenters for each item. So with that, we will proceed with tonight's agenda. First item up is general administration function. A presentation by the public on matters on the agenda. Sorry, not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the commission, Mr. Clerk, are there any requests?
There's no public comment.
Okay, so that will move to item B correspondence and staff communication from the Planning Commissioner Secretary, Mr. Tilly.
Yes, I do have a couple of items to report for the Planning Commission this evening. We do have a few guest stars on our, on our list tonight, so I'd like to, here's Commissioner Sablon has just come in too. First, first of all, we have Katie Jacobson on the, on, on our call tonight. She's the city's Economic Development and Housing Director. And then we also have Amber Seacet, who is an administrative analyst, also in the Economic Development Department on tonight, and then also, also guest starring tonight from the city attorney's office. You see Olivia Clark is joining us in addition to our, our regular city attorney or planning commission, Andreas Gour. And then the other piece of information I'd like to note for the planning commission, got some good news earlier today is that the Yolo Habitat Plan, the Habitat Conservancy won a statewide APA Award of Excellence. That's, that's a big deal. Our city has participated in that for at least 20 years in its development, perhaps longer. And so this is a, is very much a big deal to get that statewide order and they will assume, I assume the representatives for that will accept that at virtually at the virtual state conference coming up in September. But this is a big deal for us and many people have worked on it over the years past and present, but to get that award is, it's pretty special, especially you know, for you know, Yoba County, which isn't always on the statewide radar. So with that, I'll close staff communications at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. Yeah, congratulations. I know there was a lot of, a lot of work over a lot of years to get that through. Next item, we're on general administration, general administration function, part one, item C disclosure of ex parte communication. So at this time, planning commissioners should disclose any communications they've had on items on the agenda at this time. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda, consideration and approval of the minutes from the July 2, 2020 commission meeting. If there's no discussion, I'll just look for motion.
I'll move to approve.
I believe it was moved by Commissioner Sablon. Okay. Seconded by Commissioner Berliner. All in favor, please signify. Oh, nope. Mr. Clerk, we need to do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Sablon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stromphel?
Aye.
Commissioner Austin?
Aye.
Commissioner Berliner?
Aye.
Commissioner Leonard?
Aye.
Chair Leibig?
Aye. All right. Thank you so much. Moving on to the regular agenda, item number two is the public hearing regarding proposed development agreement at 412, 425 Sixth Street. Ms. Jacobson joining us tonight.
Good evening, Chair Leibig and commission members. Pleased to be before you tonight with this proposed development agreement for a very important area in the Washington District that the city has prioritized investment in, in order to attract new investment and create effective change to mixed use development patterns over the past few years. Since about 2011, there's been a lot of planning work and a lot of investment. And we've been working with this particular developer, Mike Paris, on this project for about two years. He's been involved in consolidating site control and acquiring some additional property and, and, and bringing that into his map. And I'd like to introduce Amber Seacet of my, she's a very talented analyst in my staff. She's been working side by side with me on this development agreement and she's gonna do the presentation tonight.
Thank you, Katie. Good evening, commissioners. And so with that said, we'll go into our presentation for tonight. And so Ben, if you're able to put up the, great, thank you. All right. So as Katie mentioned tonight before you, we are here to ask the commission to consider an approved resolution 20-9 PC. And this resolution is related to what was previously known as the Alura Project. This project is now formally called 440 West. So I would like to show you and review the location of this project. So this project is located in the Washington neighborhood. This project is west of Fifth Street and it's adjacent to Harriet Lane condominium. So a little review of the Washington neighborhood. So as you're all aware, the Washington neighborhood is really a priority area due to its close proximity to the riverfront, large job hubs. And then it's a really important area for compact transit serve mixed use growth. I mean, in the early 2000s, we began to better understand the district's needs related to infrastructure deficiencies, absentee property owners, brownfield sites, and many other security concerns related to walkability within the neighborhood.
Next slide.
Yeah, next slide. Thank you. I can't tell which slide. Perfect. So we're on the Washington neighborhood investment slide.
Next slide, please.
Thank you. So since then, the city has really strived to focus investment within this neighborhood. A lot of it stemming from the approved 2015 Washington Realize, which was a community, sustainable community strategy for Washington. So over the last few years, we've seen multiple forms of investment in this area, right? Including streetscape and walkability improvement, rehab and resizing of underground infrastructure, multiple art installations, the sidewalk poem, and one of the district's first public private partnerships, which was the firehouse. However, I want to note that most of these investments have been on the east side of Fifth. Next slide, please. So this brings us to why we're here tonight. So vested to subdivision map 4936 for the 440 West project. So the development agreement before you tonight will be extending the vested map, which was originally approved in November of 2007 for a 70 unit project. So in 2008, due to the economic downturn, the legislature approved multiple time extensions for maps. So with that, the new expiration for TM 4936 was moved to November of 2017. In February of 2016, and the city approved a map modification for a 60 unit project. So it reduced the project by two units and the new expiration for the map was set for November of 2020. So in April of this year, the city received a development agreement application requesting an additional year extension of tentative map 4936 for the 68 unit project. The extension was requested for a few reasons. I'm, you know, really based on the consequences of the COVID-19 pandemic, we were seeing delays in just getting technical studies done and then to also provide adequate time for the developer to submit his final map or to produce his final map for the project. Next slide, please. So this is the VSTM 4936 for the 68 unit project, which is related to the development agreement before you tonight. All right, next slide, please. So just a few highlights of the development agreement for you. This development agreement, right, will provide a one-year extension again to allow the developer the adequate time to get his final map in and to provide adequate time to include additional property that's been acquired and to submit for a final map. So in addition, this DA will still require that the project be in compliance with the city's inclusionary housing ordinance. The project will still be required to go through design review as well. And this DA will extend the rights that were vested in TM 4936, which vests the project in the city's 2007 fee schedule, the previous general plan in zoning. And lastly, the DA will also provide the developer minor city fee relief. This is to really combat with other areas in the region's urban core so that we can improve urban, urban development performance within this neighborhood. Next slide, please. So kind of going over city benefits that this project will provide us, right? So this, as mentioned before, this project will provide the city's first significant private investment west of Fifth Street in the last 15 years. So it's pretty major for this neighborhood. Additionally, the developer, as I mentioned, has recently acquired additional developed property that's adjacent to the project location to the west. We have been informed by the developer that they also intend to submit a map application to incorporate this additional acquired property prior to the expiration of this development agreement. So at the time that the modified map will be submitted to include the new additional property, the developer will also intend to request an amendment or a restated DA, which will cover the entirety of the property and dedicating a neighborhood park that was identified in Washington Realize within this area. Next slide, please. So this concludes my brief presentation. But again, we asked that a public hearing be held and that the commission consider and approve resolution 29, 20-9 PC. But with that said, staff will be available for any questions, but I would now like to take the time to introduce Mike Harris, who is president and COO of Black Pine Community. So with that, Mike Harris.
Good evening. Thank you, commission, for taking the time to listen to Amber's presentation and to hear my, my narrative as well. I'd like to start out, first I apologize for not doing the video. I have poor lighting and I'm happy to show you that I really do exist, but it kind of looks a little creepy on the screen, so. I also want to thank Katie and Amber for the work put in over the last, literally the last two years on this project. It's, it's been a very complex acquisition from the seller's perspective. We've had all kinds of estate issues involved, title components and things like that, but at the end of the day, you know, we stayed the course and we got it done. My background, just very quickly, I've lived in Sacramento, I've lived in East Sacramento for the last 24 years. I grew up in Loomis. I've been pretty much built my home building career in, in California with a company out of Chicago called Kimball Hill Homes. After 2008, they, they didn't come out of the cycle, but I ended up doing multiple financial jobs over those years and just started to get back in the home building space in 2013 is when I launched Black Pine. We're a private builder. I'm the sole shareholder of the company. And we really focus on infill because it's, it's a space that I feel like we could build and develop and add value as a private builder. And coming out of the recession was really quite interesting to see how the home building platform changed. And we kind of built a niche a little bit on doing small lot product. And it probably worked out well for us. I can, I can admit it wasn't by design. It just kind of worked out that way. And we have built a number of communities in the area since then. Currently, we just finished off the Creamery in downtown Sacramento. And this project in West Sacramento was actually brought to me by Aaron Laurel when he was the Economic Development Director as a prototype idea. And he introduced me to the seller of the Alura project two years ago. So that's really the connection on how I got involved. We're currently building on, we have six open communities, not counting this one. We're currently building in Crocker Village. Three communities in there. We have a community in Folsom called Farmhouse. We also opened the, we're opening a community in Rockland and another one in North, Northridge. We've got about seven other communities on the boards for the next couple of years and feel very positive about Sacramento in general. I'm excited to be involved in West Sac. I really watched the space for a long time and feel like we can add significant value and bring a very iconic and become a cornerstone to the Washington District. The, the history of Alura is long and storied from what I'm learning over the years. And there's been a lot of footprints and fingerprints all over this site. And as we got further involved in it, I just made the realization that we had to aggregate a larger space. And we needed to have enough scale and size to be transformative for the area. I came off a positive experience with the Creamery on a very similar situation. That was 122 homes. This project on a consolidated basis will, will, will surpass over 100 homes. We're also looked, we also, as recently as yesterday, closed on three adjacent houses over there that we will be transforming that space also into a neighborhood park, as Katie pointed out earlier. So our, our vision is very much in our wheelhouse as a culture for our company in how we'll promote the community. But more importantly, we're, we're looking at making a very significant investment in a long-term commitment to the Washington District in West Sac. So appreciate the opportunity and listening to where we are right now. And, and tonight's application is just one of the stepping stones to where we are going forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Paris. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing. And before we get too much farther, I want to check in with our clerk to confirm whether or not there have been any public comments on this item.
There are no public comments on this item.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay, I'm gonna leave the public, I'm sorry, yeah, the public hearing open. I just in case we do have specific questions for the applicant as, as well as for Ms. Jacobson, city staff. With that, thank you, Mr. Paris, for your presentation and Katie, for all of your work in the Washington project, I'm sorry, the Washington District, especially with Washington Realized. And Amber, thank you for your presentation. Are there, are there any questions from the commissioners of the applicant? Okay, Ms. Ms. Austin?
Yeah, it's, it's less of a comment, a miss of a question, more of a comment. So first of all, and I'm sure that my fellow commissioners will join me as well, but Washington District is really promising, but also really challenging to develop. And so first of all, thank you very much to the, to the city staff who've worked on it. So Ms. Jacobson, the Seacet, and it sounds like Mr. Laurel as well. So you know, it, it takes, especially over a long period of time. So I just want to acknowledge the staff that went into this. And then I also want to acknowledge the applicant. So, Mr. Paris, you have a, I think that you, you gave a very humble presentation, but you've done really extraordinary work and infill hasn't been easy. And you've, you've been, you've been involved in projects that weren't easy, weren't straightforward. And I think you've turned out a really high quality product and been as responsive as you can be to the neighborhood. So, so yeah, so thank you for choosing to work on a project like this infill development that can be challenging in West Sacramento. And I look forward to seeing what next steps come out of this project.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Lester, are there any other questions for the applicant or city staff combined? Okay. Ms. Sablon?
Yes.
So sorry, I just have a basic question, I think, for city staff. So I think this is the first DA that I've seen that wasn't related to cannabis. So I just, just for my own edification here, is, is this something we typically do if the map extension has expired and we can't extend it further? Is this a workaround and is that what we're trying to preserve and is this typically?
I can respond to that. This is a unique development agreement. You're correct. Typically, you would see a development agreement for the term of a build out period or the term of infrastructure install and build out. And it's intended to give the developer certainty over that long period of time while they're doing their project. In this case, due to COVID, doing the complexities of this site and the ownership of the site, the need to consolidate ownership and acquire additional property for a park. And then the pandemic just created a lot of delay. So it's a number of factors that we, working with the city attorney staff, came up with this solution because this is such an important investment that really will change the face of the neighborhood. And so we wanted to protect it and we worked with the city attorney and David Tilly and proposed that this is a solution. It's still keeping a tight rein. So one year is a very short period of time. Developer still has a lot of lifting to do with regard to design review, map approvals, working on city staff on park dedication. So it was, you're correct, in order to, to solve the problem and give that additional year that was needed to make the, you know, allow the project to be realized.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Well, with that, is a year long enough, given that, I mean, the end of pandemic is, I don't know when that's going to be or if it's anywhere in sight. So is a year enough for, for this to get through or do we need to think about that?
Um, you know, that's a really good point. What we might want to do is add and then create an additional year term at the city's discretion. And I think we can work with David and Olivia on possibly adding that language into the, into the term.
Okay. And if we were to do that, is that something we need to include in a motion or would that come back to us?
David, do you want to?
Yes, yeah, we would, we would need to, sorry, go ahead, David.
We need to be, sorry, definitely need to be part of the motion. If you can give us that direction, we can work out the exact language on that prior to go to council rather than trying to work it out of the fly. And Olivia, Andreas, jump in here if I'm out of turn. That does seem like a relatively simple provision to insert into the DA.
Yeah, that, that would be an easy change and the commission could decide to either make it a recommendation to the council or to actually direct staff to make the change to the draft DA. And that's up to the commission's pleasure, which, which route they'd want to take on that.
I think that would be something that we could deliberate on once we have our questions out. Commissioner Sablon?
I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Sternfels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two quick questions for city staff. The first is, I noticed the other unique, the other feature of this development agreement is a fee, some fee waivers. And so I just wanted to check in, make sure that, you know, that there was nothing in staff report about the kind of the fiscal analysis conducted with those. And I want to be comfortable knowing that our, our, our city's infrastructure funds are going to be okay, given those fee waivers. It's not a huge amount of money, I realize, in the long term, but I just, just want to check in with city staff on that question.
Well, yeah. Thank you for asking that. Because Planning Commission doesn't delve too deeply into financial issues, I didn't include it in the staff report. But essentially, the, it's, it's a very minor fee relief. Fees in our city are, are, you know, competitively very high. And so the department requested in its budget last year something called a re, Riverfront redevelopment tool funding. And it was to sort of incentivize certain projects that were catalyst projects as we move forward. So the other aspect of this is also that because it's in the EIFD and because the city gets a really high share of EF, EIFD property tax revenue, what the plan is and what I'd be recommending when we go forward is that we make those fee funds whole with the Riverfront development tools. It would be booked as a loan and then at, it would take about two to three years for that EIFD revenue from the project itself, the increment that's raised off of the project itself, to then come back and make the funds whole. So it's essentially moving funds around within the city, waiting for the tax increment growth from the project to then reimburse those funds.
Thank you for the response, Ms. Jacobson. I really appreciate it and love what, love what you're suggesting in the response as well. I was, I was hesitant to ask the question because to your point, Planning Commission usually doesn't delve into those matters, but with the DA before us, I just felt like the need to have some comfort on that, on that side for the decision-making purposes. And, and also knowing we have some new commissioners who haven't seen a DA like this before. My other question is regarding whether or not we'll see this come back to us for design review. And I'm, that's probably for Mr. Tilly.
Yeah, I also like to recognize Kathy Allen on my staff has contributed quite a bit to this work as well. We are anticipating getting a new subdivision map and a design review package from Mr. Paris hopefully soon. And that whole thing will need to come through the planning commission and sort of our, our normal, normal way of doing. So the whole project will be coming back before the planning commission at a later date.
Wonderful. Well, in closing, I'll just say I echo Ms. Austin's comments. I think it's a great project. Really excited to see the investment, the continued investment in Washington. We've, we've spent a lot of time on Washington in the last 18 months, I feel like, and it's all been great, great projects that I look forward to seeing come to fruition. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Sternfels. Thank you, Katie, for your, your presentation. I do have a couple of specific comments or questions for you before I get started. I am definitely interested in seeing this project move forward. It came before us, before the commission in 2006. I first saw it in 2007. And we've seen it a couple of times since. And there have been some changes, but every time we do an extension, I will say that the planning commission has hesitated because there have been multiple extensions. That said, nothing is moving that side of Fifth. And it would be, it would be nice, it would be nice to get something going. So I'm very encouraged by this and by, by Mr. Paris joining and hopefully pushing this over the, the finish line. My questions are with the, the fee structure. And I know that Planning Commission doesn't have a lot to say about fee structures, but I do have some concerns. We're working off the, the 2007 vesting schedule and here we are in 2020, extending this potentially into 2022 and adding additional properties at a fee schedule that will be 15 years old, potentially at the end of the term. Can you speak on whether or not this, this is going to be a big impact to the city?
Absolutely. So while it seems that vesting is a great advantage to a developer when it comes to fees, it's not that big of an advantage because the vesting allows a city to apply cost of increase, cost of living increase, engineering index, cost of living increases every year so that the, it's not So that the, it's not, the developer is vested in fees from 2007, but he's not paying 2007 fees. Those fees are very close with the annual increases. They're very close to what they would be today. So the main advantage that he's getting with this vesting is that in 2007, in that district, their fee resolution provided a 50% discount to the water and sewer fees. And so that's what's really being protected here by the fee vesting in the map. But the fee load is nevertheless quite significant. And as I think I put in the recitals of the DA, even if he were to move forward with this, only this area, this map alone, it's over $3 million in impact fees to the city. And that's, so when you think about it being 100 units, you're, you know, much closer to $5 million in impact fees. So the, there is fee relief being provided. This vesting is giving him some benefit, but it's not, it's not a terribly significant benefit in terms of our fee funds.
Thank you. I I know it's a balancing act and I'm glad you brought up the EIFD funding for for this district. And I have been interested in seeing how we can better leverage funds coming into that to maybe mitigate some of our higher fees. However, I also know that that is still in discussion with the EIFD commission and council. So and I I appreciate your creativity and and working with the with the applicant on that. Also encourage these types of developments in this area. It's transit oriented development. Just as a reminder, in the past, when this has come up, the biggest concern has been parking. And we we continue to move forward with these these projects, knowing that there are going to be short term parking issues most likely. And we we are going to have to live through those until we get our our public transportation infrastructure up to speed with the developments. Sometimes cart before horse, but optimistic that we will get there. Okay, before I close the public comment period, are there any questions, follow up questions with the applicant where you would need the applicant? Okay, with that, we will go ahead and and close the public hearing. Bring it back to deliberation. I heard one recommendation for an additional year at the city discretion. Mr. Tilly, would that be at the zoning administrator discretion or city discretion? Does it matter how we specify that?
I would recommend that be at city manager discretion or his or designated.
Another option to consider for this extension would be to leave it as drafted. And if we feel that we need more time as we come to the close of this term, an amendment could be done to to extend the term an additional year.
That takes a lot of staff effort, though, to do a full amendment to a DA for.
You'd have to be back here in six months. So I would, I, that is certainly is an option for the commission if you if you want to see it again. But our, I think, staff's recommendation would be to tie that to the city manager.
Right, Mr. Sternfels?
I'd just be interested in knowing from city staff, is there a preference here for us to just make this recommendation to council and let them figure it out and give you some time to present something to them versus us trying to figure this out and wordsmith this perfectly? I kind of feel like I'd rather just suggest that that be the course of action when it goes to council.
I I think that's that's absolutely a great solution.
And so your part of your recommendation to the council on this matter would be for them to consider this additional one year timeframe to the city man and leave it to the city manager and then the council can go for that or not. In either case, the city council's going to make the final decision on this project. And so they do count on the commission's input. So if we were to make that recommendation, we would carry that forth to the council and then they would make their final, take the final decision on it.
So so based on that feedback, I would support a broad recommendation that, recommend, I'd I'd support recommending approval with a recommendation to council that they add a one year extension to city manager's discretion.
I think I could go either way. I I know city council also has the ability to strike and they they do take our recommendations very, very seriously. So I think I could go either way. But as long as it's our our recommendation, it's it's collective. I would like to make sure that we get at least a straw poll on this before we before we vote on it to make sure that we do have a consensus with the recommendation. So for straw poll on a Zoom meeting, David, can I run that? Just call him off.
If we can.
Or yes or no?
Or you can turn on the, you can turn on the gallery view and see some head nodding.
Yeah, actually, is there anybody who would be opposed to this recommendation that they want to make sure it stays at one year and is not extended any more years without coming back to the planning commission? Seeing none, it sounds like we have consensus on a recommendation to city council for an additional year at the city manager discretion or designated. If this recommendation moves forward to council. All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions, staff deliberation?
I'd add just one thing. In reference to the extension, you know, we do have concerns in the city about, especially with the cannabis industry that we've all approved a lot of projects recently. We're just concerned about having so many approved things out there that never move forward. But with Black Pine and Mike Paris, their reputation precedes them as people who act. And we don't, you know, and that's just hearsay. You know, that's just my a personal impression from being involved in the industry and knowing what they do around in the region. In this case, having just faith in a in a reputation, which I know is not necessarily contractual, lots of things can change and have them have to draw things out a little bit longer. I I just haven't known them to be the type of development firm that just sits around on something for years and years and years and can't get it together or get their money together to build the thing or design the thing. So I feel confident just in supporting, you know, the the additional year at the discretion of city manager, who is also aware of the reputation, who originally reached out to them. So I feel like in this case, even though we can't, there's not a lot that we can put on paper that talks about reputation, we can feel a little bit more confident here about all the players involved, that it's a prudent decision and and it allows a little more flexibility for them to execute on this vision as they've tried to assemble this and add park space and everything, make it a better project. So I'm fully in support of it. And contextually, I think that might help some other people feel a little bit better about allowing for that extra year or allowing for the freedom for that extra year to happen, should it be needed.
Thank you, Commissioner Leonard, well said. With that, I will entertain a motion. The move, motion would be to move whatever and then please include the recommendation for city council.
I I will move to approve staff recommendation with recommendation to council to include a option for a year extension at the discretion of the city manager.
Moved by Ms. Sablon?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Leonard, please. Mr. Clerk, please do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Leonard?
Aye.
Commissioner Berliner? Commissioner Austin?
Aye.
Commissioner Sablon?
Aye.
Commissioner Strompho?
Aye.
Here leaving.
Aye. All right, moves unanimously. So good luck with the project. I definitely look forward to seeing it progress.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I apologize that, you know, we've only got two items on the agenda. So I think we are moving into informal discussion. I've managed to lose my agenda, so.
I'd just like to let the commission know we will be meeting again in two weeks at our regular, regular time, albeit still on Zoom.
Ms. Austin?
Yeah, this is, Mr. Tilly references earlier about the American Planning Association's California conference. It is going to be virtual. It's going to be about a month from now, September 14th through the 16th. Is it okay for me to share in the chat the link? Any issue when we have a looking at Mr. Bor?
Don't think that would be any different than pointing somebody to a website for information.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, so I'm going to share in the share in the chat box a link for registration. We are all, thanks to the city of West Sacramento, members of the American Planning Association. So you do get a discounted rate. I think I'm, Russ and I are excited about working on programs for planning commissioners specifically. And I'll also highlight that if you, you know, if there's a topic that you want to learn more about, this is a really great opportunity. And for non-planning commissioners, maybe tuning in, I think that that's really great for folks from other industries, whether you're interested in health or transportation or the things that dovetail with land use planning. It's a great opportunity to learn more and in a virtual format.
Thank you, Bernard. Mr. Tilly, in the past, the city has actually provided limited funding for sometimes one or two planning commissioners to attend a conference here and there. Given that this is a virtual, virtual conference, and there may be more opportunities, can we look into whether or not there would be financial support from the city?
Yes, I will have my staff look into that tomorrow. And our resources are definitely a little more limited now. But the silver, I guess, the silver lining in all this is the biggest expense for many of these things is travel. Now one does not need to do that. So hopefully the conferences are a little more economical. But we will look into that tomorrow. And if any commissioners are intending, desiring to go to this, please contact myself or Ben offline and we'll work on that.
In the past, I've found these incredibly informative, learning about zoning, different types of zonings, what other cities are doing, what other jurisdictions are doing. But there's often an entire session just dedicated to planning commissioners, which can often also be.
There is going to be two.
Something tells me I might be involved, I don't know.
Two sessions dedicated to commissioners.
Any other informal discussion? Okay, with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you so much, and that is all. Have a good evening.
I thank you.
Good night, everyone.